Good morning.
We'll call the panel Select Board, regular meeting Thursday, July 18th, 2013, at 7:00 PM. For the agenda approval, approval of the minutes, warrants, mail, old business, town auditors, readaption of Basic Emergency Operations Plan. I'd like to add the fire pond visit that we had last Tuesday. And under new business, I'd like to have the board go out to have Linda put a thing out to bid on a used truck for the highway department, small truck. Anything the board see to be added at this point?
Motion.
Take a motion. We have a motion from Mike, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The approval of the minutes for July 11th.
Motion.
Second. Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Warrants.
Yeah, it was Dell, I think.
Yep. Accounts payable, the amount of $12,710.33. Waste management, one of your large ones, and diesel fuel purchase, they're two of the larger ones on now. Those are your warrants. Take a motion.
Motion.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Stand.
From both or?
No, just the one for payroll.
Okay, we have our mail. We have a letter from Dennis Candelora stating that since they've executed the option agreement with the town on the Tandry Hydro site, I'd like to bring this to your attention, there's been some movement down on the site, people fishing and different things moved around, small scale vandalism, they'd just like to have us kind of warn our constable to maybe keep an eye out for any damages that could occur. We were down there a couple of weeks ago on a site visit, we saw some of this, didn't see anything as a destructive matter, other than probably kids fishing, doing different things down there on the property. We have a letter to the Select Board from Cynthia Leggie.
Leggie.
She received an anonymous letter stating concerns about property which she does not own on Somno Road, a little upset about this. I received a letter from Bennington because they received an anonymous call, that there were people camping and so on there, found out it was not in Bennington. So, this lady does not own the property, we have turned this over to our health and zoning administrator to check out. We had a Board of Health meeting, July 15th, at 6:30 PM here, discuss the minutes of the last meeting and a legal issue. There was a person that was sent a letter on some violations, and the letters have been sent to the state concerning such. That is our mail.
Sure was tonight. They don't want to come apart? Too humid for them. Put two there. There's only a couple of new things on here that I'm asking about, some of it is old stuff that you were going to look into from the last meeting, I'm not sure what progress you've made with it, but...
Shoot.
Okay, last week, we paid an invoice to West Mountain Animal Hospital for a treatment of a dog named Duke, and the owner's dog was listed on the invoice, are we going to get reimbursement for that?
We are.
And whose responsibility is it to bill?
Her animal control officer had them sign a statement, and they are making payments to her.
Okay, so when it's fully paid, she'll turn it into the treasurer?
She will turn it into the treasurer.
Or lender or somebody? Okay, good. Last year, at the July 21st meeting of 2012, the board voted to have the administrative assistant get information for an RFP for our insurances for fiscal year 2014. Last week, again, we paid Will's $66,837 for the insurances for this year, was an RFP done and the insurance put out to bid? And if not, why not?
Linda, would you like to answer that one at this point?
No, I would not.
Okay. I would suggest we'll table that one and-
Go back to it.
Come back to it when more information's available, I did notice that also.
On June 6th, the board voted to recoup the bereavement pay from an elected official that was incorrectly paid, as of June 30th, and actually last week's warrant, we haven't seen a reduction in hours to accomplish this. Is this an oversight?
Nope, that has had a letter sent, and there's been a timeframe set up to have this taken care of.
So, you're just going to reduce the hours that she turns in during a week, right?
No, we've asked for payment back on the bereavement.
So, if you get payment back on the bereavement, you have to get the .0765 FICA that we pay, you have to get the 4% municipal employment that we pay?
Whatever it takes to make it corrected.
Okay. Could we get a copy of that?
Yeah, could we get a copy of that, Steve? If that's possible.
Copy of what?
The bill that went to, or is going to go to the official that's going to pay this back.
Yeah, that was in our minutes, there's no, I don't see a problem with that.
Well, I just thought that it was going to happen before the year was closed, that's all.
Well, it was trying to be, in fact.
And did you, did you consider just reducing the hours on a current pay to take care of that, and that would take care of all of the payroll and everything else, or?
Speaking out of turn on that, because I'm not in this office all day, I have noticed that we are at least one auditor short right at the moment.
Mm-hmm.
And with the-
Give me one lister.
One lister, I'm sorry.
Oh.
With one being short, I'm assuming the workload with different things that's going on, that it may affect us more by cutting the time than it would be actually getting the reimbursement.
No, I don't mean not having her work, what I mean is having her, having you deduct the hours from her actual payroll.
In other words, she works 10 hours, get paid for 7.
Right.
Is that against, is that against the-
That's almost like donating time.
I'm not really sure.
I'm not either.
That's a bad way to say it.
It's not that we've been paid for it, but it's like, you know, that would, that would be the simplest way to take care of it.
Agreed, and I don't know what the amount is, but I believe from our meeting, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we don't want to burden this person either, and we said that, I believe in the letter, we said in some timely fashion to make restitution to the town, and it will be taken care of.
Okay.
Okay, in our minutes-
Maybe we ought to just ask her if she'd like to have it.
It might be easier for her.
For her, because we didn't, that other benefit increment and stuff like that.
Even if you did, you know-
It'd be easier for her, just to take the hours and maybe she-
16 hours totally, maybe four, four and, four and four, or eight and eight, or something.
You can show it on the-
I'd run that by her, I would think. She'd probably just assume, get back some hours rather than-
If you get a copy of our minutes, you will see that the motion was made and seconded to send a letter requesting payment, bereavement pay to be, to be made by the end of August.
Okay. What month was that? I looked at the minutes of June 6th, was that at the same time? And I knew that you, I knew that you had, yeah, that, yeah, I didn't see-
We actually had a meeting on it originally, and we didn't get a response, so we-
Okay.
Went into it and certified mailed.
Okay.
Before we leave that issue, it's not here, but we have another one that where we had a part-time employee, and we brought it to your attention about the bereavement pay too. She also was paid a full eight hours, 24 hours pay, which actually exceeded what she normally got per week, and we're wondering where the status of that is.
According to our town policy, which we are rewriting, and we currently are just about done with it, but toward the old one, we read this over very carefully at our last meeting, it doesn't say where it schedules out the time, it said, "We'll be paid three hour, or three days bereavement pay." It didn't break it down as in how many hours part-time, it says, "Part-time and full-time employees, three days." And there's an error in that policy because it doesn't break it down. So with that, we're making that exception on our new policy, so it'll be prorated, so that does not arrive again.
Okay. Will that affect her in this situation, or not?
Absolutely not.
Right. The only thing I would bring to the board, and I understand where you're, you're coming from there, and I will say this for the record, and I hope it's in the record, in bereavement, it's tenuous, and it's, no one wants to make money on the death of a family member, and to exceed, to receive salary or monies exceeding their, the normal salary is not proper, it's not proper, it wasn't proper in the kind of work that I was in, and I'm sure it's, there needs to be, to be looked at this. Yes, you can still make the change, the days, but I still think, still need to look at this and address this.
I just explained to you that we did, from the old policy to the new policy, we're correcting that.
We sent a letter concerning purchasing a new computer for the ZA, planning, and DRB secretary, auditors, and health officer, have you guys discussed this, or come to a decision, or?
Well, there is a policy, a computer policy, but because you folks use it for your reports and so on and so forth, usually we have a system where that, that computer, I think it's that computer there, would be removed, another one goes down the line in replacement in order.
Do you know when, when that's going to happen? I believe that Ellen's, is it Ellen's computer that's due to be replaced, Linda?
Yeah, we haven't, haven't discussed it yet.
Haven't discussed it?
No.
All right.
We've actually been-
Did you understand the issue with this computer, though?
We did understand it.
Because all the programs are 2010, and the, and the computer was made in 1990, whatever?
We, we did understand it, and we've been relatively busy with other business, and that is on the list of things to do, but it hasn't been got to.
Okay. Any word yet on getting the payroll check stubs back with the warrants?
Okay, the only information I got on that, and I got as much as I could, what it said was, "The following public records are exempt from public inspection and copying, personal documents relating to an individual information, including information, any files relating to a person's finances." There seems to be a cloudy area on them being copied and leaving premises. I'm not a lawyer, I don't understand that, that's why I asked the lawyer.
Is that, is that his legal opinion of the town?
That's what was sent down, the Title 1-317.
Is that from the state by its chances?
No, that's from our lawyer.
Okay. Can we get a copy of that, please?
Yeah, I don't see any reason why not.
So, does that mean that you're not going to put the check stubs in with the warrants anymore?
I don't, I don't, I don't think that's the problem, it's copying them and anything leaving this building, I think is where the issue is. And it's not the check stubs as much as the personal information.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I don't understand that totally myself. There's issues with it, and without understanding it, and without being a lawyer, I can only rely on what I'm told, and, and personal effects shouldn't, I'd like to see them not on there, period. Then there wouldn't be a problem if there's some sort of withholdings for whatever, for retirements, or whatever benefits, whatever, then this issue wouldn't be there.
All, all the information on this stub is on the check registry, payroll registry.
Well, then why, why are you asking to get that back?
There's one, there's one thing that we cannot see on that, is the accrued, we need to look at the accrued, and, and that's why we're pulling a report off the computer, and we've had problems getting the report, is to verify the accrued. All, all the other information is, we see it, it's on the check registry. It's a, it's a minor thing, but it's a, just a, a little checks and balances.
You know, like accrued vacation time, whatever.
Sick time, right.
Time, so on and so forth, right?
Usage.
What's, what's the board's feeling on this, we've-
They have access to a report that says the same thing.
Report doesn't show the, what we need to see is to be sure that the employee, is if they're getting sick or annual leave, that they're, if you had 40, if they have 40 hours, let's just say, and they use eight hours vacation, then their accrued left would be 32. We do get a report, but it, it's not the same as looking at it and verifying it. It's a simple thing, it's what we, you know, we've been doing it for, since I've been here, and I'm sure it was done many, many years before.
Is that the coffee taste stubs? The problem is employees do not receive that information leaving the sign.
That's probably, to come here and look at it is one thing, but to take them somewhere, who knows where it's going once it leaves here? I know I want my, my information out there.
Is there any incidents of any information going anywhere outside of this building?
If you copy them and they leave the building, why can't you look at them here and get the information?
We do, that's what we want to do, we've been coming here on 9:30 on Tuesdays to look at them, and the information isn't there, that's what we want to do. That means looking at these and not being able to-
No? No law more this, this week?
No law more.
We record the number, check number, and we make sure they're in sequence, we look at the, the person, make sure that they're getting their, their right pay, we verify the hours. The only thing we cannot physically see, and we, and it's easy to stipulate, we'll never make a copy, but we need to see, so that we can look at our report that we pull off, and that it verifies what's on the check.
You only need to be provided with reports.
I-
According to VSA what?
I'll find it, put it in drop it in the box.
This is a very minor thing, but it would be-
It's not just me, there's other employees that are having real concerns about their information leaving the premises.
So, to put this aside, I'd like to make a motion to continue where it's going right now, well, the paste stubs not in the reports, I mean, I haven't got my information living in this building.
All right, until further information is gathered.
Right.
Would you like to add that with them? Which one I'm just gonna dig out.
You have the statute requiring, what more information do you need?
Well, you just said you were getting some-
You just said you were going to supply the information.
It's right there. It's exempt from copying, it's personal finances.
You will have a copy of this at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
These pages I got today.
I was looking for the conflict of interest policy that was approved. I'm sorry, I forgot there was a motion, there was, yep, sorry.
I had a motion.
You had the motion. We need a second on it.
What was the motion again?
To keep going where we are without putting the paste stubs in there, till further information is gathered.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, I'm gonna abstain at this point until I get more knowledge on it.
Yeah, and I gotta abstain, because I don't know what you, what's happening here. I don't know the law.
Okay, when will we be able to get a copy of the conflict of interest policy that was approved by the board?
It was just currently signed this evening, because the copy we had had white outs and different things corrected, and we had a fresh copy, and it was signed this evening. So, I would assume-
Anytime, anytime. It'll be in the book then, right, Linda?
Put you a copy in your box.
Oh, you did already?
No, I will, as soon as I need it.
Oh, okay, thank you. And you were gonna check and see where the $20,000 went that we asked about at the last meeting, the $20,000 from the road-
Right.
-account that was transferred to the general account?
What we, and I was trying to figure, but anyways, I was enlightened to the fact that after our administrator's salary, that leaves that amount roughly over, and in that, regarding to the administrator fees, to the road fund and a wastewater treatment fund, consider not only the administrator assistant wages included benefit costs, but also includes a portion of the treasures, wages, and benefits, both positions are part of the administrative cost and supplies within. So, so out of that, you have the treasures, wages part of it, and you have supplies, and you have benefits.
Okay, but can you see the point that I made, that we're actually voting on this twice, we're paying this twice?
No, I can't, that's why I'm having a little trouble.
Okay, if it was just the administrative assistant that we're talking about, to make it easier, because I, the budget goes all, all the same way for every line item that you're mentioning, if you budget $20,000 in the road budget for administration, and you budget the total of the administrator's pay in the general budget, then you're budgeting twice for the same item.
Are we, are we stating that 20,000 comes out of the road toward that? Because we're not, we're not taking-
But you're not expensing it individually in the road budget itself, you're taking that 20,000 and putting it in the general fund, which-
Against the road, for the administrator, for the work she does in the-
But why?
Because that's why it's divided up, I don't know, I didn't create that. That's, that's the way it was divided up, that the highway department would pay a certain amount, the treatment plant would pay a certain amount, and then the taxpayers, obviously, nearly up for the rest.
So, the reality is that your general fund should be $20,000 higher, your budget should, should be $20,000 higher than it is.
Well, that I'm not sure of.
Or it's taking care of overages that, that have come through.
No, that I'm not sure of. I just explained how the monies revolve around to that total figure.
Steve, is there a break, I mean, just not that belong this, but is there a breakdown of that $20,000, like you mentioned, the treasure and the benefits?
No, I didn't make a breakdown, I just got the information where the money goes.
You got that from the treasure?
No, I got that from a current, a past auditor.
Okay, the only other thing that's not on here, we gave all of you guys a letter about the town report, and I realize that it's early, but I would just like to say that we would like to have everything to us by December 31st for the report, which means Steve writing a chairman's report, and we'd also like to hear if any of you guys have done anything specific, like maybe Mike with the emergency management, or, you know, I, I'm not sure what everybody does, but, you know, we'd like to have something to put in the town report from, from you guys.
Yep, we will work on that, and-
We're gonna give you another reminder in October.
Absolutely. Yes.
Things have a way of getting gotten.
This is true.
Okay, I don't have anything else, Billy?
Nope, I'm all set. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. I'll have Linda make a copy of this and throw it in your box also.
That's fine.
Okay, great.
Well, before you guys leave-
Yes.
We did receive a letter from you, I think each one of the board members about VLTCs and the conferences.
Yeah, we thought we, Ellen's not here tonight, so obviously, we talked to Ellen.
Well, she wrote us a letter.
Oh, okay.
Well, she said if you were going to discuss it, she wanted to be here.
Be here, so that's why we-
We'll table that then.
Okay.
Nope, not a problem.
We don't want to bring it up because we-
Nope, we will table it. Okay, readaption Basic Emergency Operations Plan. Has everybody had a chance to skim through this a little bit? It's pretty thorough.
Yeah, I think I looked at it once.
There. Okay, any suggestions, thoughts, comments? That's why I checked the door, and it's warmer outdoors, and it isn't here still, so.
It's your choice.
We only got a few more minutes, maybe we can-
Buzz rate through it.
Our basic and manner to emergency operations. Again, any questions, comments, any motions to come up?
I mean, I, I think it has all the pertinent information for our town, who's in charge of what, phone numbers, contact information.
Response plan.
Right.
It hasn't changed.
I think it's got problem areas.
The places that are not filled in, or something happens, then you pull this, and-
Right.
And the fun starts all over again.
Do we have to make a motion to accept this?
Yes.
Yeah, we gotta adopt it.
Okay.
Like Linda stated, last year, last time it was adopted, it was, what the hell was it, emergency response or something like that?
Couple of years ago.
Yeah, but they changed the name now to Basic Emergency Operations Plan, BEOP.
Would you like to make that into a motion?
I make a motion, we accept the Basic Emergency Operations Plan as written.
We have a second?
Second.
Do you need to adopt it?
Yes, what did I say? Accepted, adopt, thank you.
Okay, there's a motion to adopt it?
Second it.
And Ronnie has a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna abstain.
Just all that work you did? Well, that worked, he did.
Well, we have something... Oh, we have two things.
Tax exempt certificates leaving the building. How a tax exempt certificate is leaving the building? I don't know why.
Well, I can't get up.
It was just copied and left the building. I don't know why.
See, it's not shaped to be leaving the building.
I'm not sure why. You don't want me to check this?
Tell me, John.
Well, Peter...
That's piece of information couldn't be left.
If you don't mind. At this time, there's been a gentleman from CAT TV who's been recording our meetings here in Powell and probably elsewhere. Am I correct or no? Pretty much elsewhere, and he's retiring. Gonna start a new venture in a new part of his life, and I think from the board, minus one, we'd like to thank you and CAT TV for producing these and keeping the public informed and enlightened, and you did a great job. And Chris is gonna be our new cameraman, so we'd like to welcome his as well. So good luck to you, and welcome, Chris. Thank you.
Hey, good for taking up the slack while I disappeared. I like that.
I used to do that for a living.
Very good. Okay, we had a visit last week at our fire pond, Powell Center. Beth Pierce, which is the State Treasurer's Office, came down. And it was Clint, Delbotz, Jason, and Walt from the Fire Department, and myself, and two representatives from the Bennington Rescue Squad, because they also received some funds from the State Treasurer's Office. Beth wanted to come down and look to see what had been done over at the fire pond. As a lot of people may or may not have known, when we had our fire on Route 7 last year, we were unable to get water from that particular area, excuse me, because the pond had filled in with silt. We have had it rebuilt. The town voted to do this and pay for it, and then hopefully find funds to secure what we paid. We paid a little over $11,000 to have this secured. It was done over. Jason managed it, drew it up. The job was done very nicely. We have a very nice pond now with proper overflow, proper catch basins to catch the silt before it actually gets to the pond, a dry hydro pond. It's a nice job. Between Bill, Clint, and Beth, they actually got us the money to cover all our expenses on that. So this was a wash deal, which was really kinda nice. And she came down to see the pond. She was very impressed with it. She liked the way it was handled, the way we handled it from the board, through the fire departments, through the whole management, so... It's kind of a nice pat on the back, and it was also nice to be reimbursed for an important part of our town, so... Kudos to all the people involved in that again. Job well done. The last thing I would like to do is put out to bid on a used three-quarter or one-ton pickup for the highway department, preferably a diesel. We would like to stay... Well, we would like to stay under, say, $22,000 in the bidding process.
That's for a used one?
For a used one. Just to give a balance point on what we're looking at this point. Being a diesel, under $100,000 would be preferred. Regular cab. And obviously all-wheel drive, so just... And with that, I have nothing else unless the board does.
Whether or without a power, it doesn't really matter.
It doesn't matter at this point, because we usually run nine-footers.
Yeah?
The board have anything?
Anything? No.
Okay, with that, we'll take a motion then.
Motion, adjourn.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let's make like the good shepherd and get the flock out of here.
Thank you, folks.